I'd like to call to order the May 8th, 2017 meeting of the Highland Park Board of Education. The New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice of and to attend the meetings of the public bodies at which any business affecting their interest is discussed or acted upon. In compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act, the Highland Park Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting, setting forth the time, date, and location to be submitted for publication to the Home News Tribune and Star Ledger and posted on the board's website at least 48 hours in advance of this meeting. Members of the public who wish to address the board will be given the opportunity to do so before the board adjourns for the evening. Linda, could we please have a roll call?
Ms. Byer?
Here.
Ms. Byer?
Here.
Ms. Simorusti?
Here.
Ms. Gowen?
Here.
Mr. Krieger?
Here.
Mr. Magaziner?
Ms. McVatt and D'Nicola?
Here.
Ms. Pietrobono?
Here.
Ms. Richardson?
Here.
Mr. Roselwitz?
Here.
Be it resolved, pursuant to the Sunshine Act NJ SA 10-4-12 and 13, the Highland Park Board of Education will now meet in closed session to discuss student discipline. This exemption is permitted to be discussed in closed session in accordance with NJ SA 10-4-13. Information regarding the board's closed session discussion will be disclosed to the public as soon as the need for confidentiality no longer exists. Can I get a motion to convene into closed session?
So moved.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Convene to regular session?
So moved.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Can we please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we get started this evening, I would just want to note the absence of Board Member Rob Magaziner, who pointed out to me earlier today that this is the first meeting he's missed since he started with us on the board and expressed my and the board's condolences to Rob and his family. Rob lost his father-in-law last week, which is why he's not here. They're sitting shiva tonight. So, on behalf of all of us to Rob and his wife Cheryl and their kids and extended family, our sincere condolences on your loss. Okay, Linda, on the agenda, we have two communications. And actually, maybe you can speak to one, Ruth. We had someone write to us about our registration forms online, which got like a bit confusing at first, because when I first got the email, I was like, wait, but there's nothing on the re-registration forms. And so there was a little bit of back and forth, and luckily, Sharice and I chatted a little bit, and we were able to figure it out. So, the registration forms, when a new family comes to the district, did include questions about immigration status. They asked if the student is a U.S. citizen, and if not, where they are a citizen. So, we quickly zapped those off of all of the registration forms. Scott took them down off of the Irving website, put back up registration forms without that on there, and then you were going to reach out to all of the other building-level principals to make sure that the proper forms are disseminated, so that... That issue has been taken care of, and we took care of it pretty swiftly. I was pretty proud of us. And then, Dara Botfenik, who's a teacher in the middle school, had sent the board an invitation to attend Diversity Day, which unfortunately, I wasn't able to, but I know you attended at least a little bit. Do you want to like, maybe just go some little rundown?
Yeah, major shout-out to everybody who organized that, because I'm sure it took a heck of a lot of time and energy on their behalf to do that. And the kids really seemed very excited, to say the least. And the presentation, the major presentation at the end of the day was just... It was really, really inspirational. I really... I enjoyed it fully, and I'm sure that most of the kids in the auditorium also did and got a lot out of it. So, I think it was a good way to end the day. And Seth Capravale was here, also, speaking with the kids, and Ashton Burrell was here. And I know that my own son jumped out of bed in the morning and said, "It's Diversity Day! I'm so excited!" So, they, you know, they're able to choose what classes or workshops they want to take, and they really think about it. So, it's really a shout-out to the committee that planned that. That was fantastic.
Yeah, I heard Mikey Fallon's, Dr. Mikey Fallon's presentation at the end of the day was fantastic, and there were many damp eyes in the room. But I love him. He does such amazing presentations. And John Hulm also did a presentation on the African-American History Project during the day. So, I heard a lot of good things about the workshops that were held throughout the day.
So did I, as a parent. You know, you get to choose, but you don't get the choices all the time.
Right.
So, sometimes you get a workshop that you're not so enthusiastic about, and so my sixth grader got desegregation in the military. And she was like, meh, you know, I'll go. She wasn't really excited about it. She wanted to go to another workshop about LGBTQ issues. And so she walked in, and she didn't have any expectation of anything, and Mr. Dykman just knocked her socks off. She couldn't stop talking to me about how incredible all the information was. And we went on a trip just recently down into Piscataway, and she was pointing out that if you go down Plainfield Avenue down towards Target, there is some sort of area that used to be a military base, and she had details about what was going on there.
Wow, Camp Kilmer.
So, yeah, shout-out to everyone for Diversity Day.
Yeah, that's Camp Kilmer.
Yeah, Camp Kilmer, yeah.
On Livingston campus.
Yeah.
Well, I hope next year I can attend part of Diversity Day. Okay, so, just as a reminder to everybody, we have stuff on our agenda tonight, but this is just our workshop meeting, so we're not voting on anything except the budget. The budget we are voting on, but the rest of our agenda items, we are not. So, number eight on our agenda is the minutes from our regular public and executive sessions from April 24th, 2017. If you guys haven't a chance to look at them yet, they are on the drive. If you had a look at them, anybody have any questions or concerns? No? Okay, so we'll move on to nine, which is our formal public hearing and board adoption of the final budget.
I'm going to sit for this one. The Finance and Facilities Committee, Ms. Huffla and I are presenting the final budget tonight to the full board for adoption, hopefully, and it does not include any changes that were made since my last presentation. So, what I've done is I've narrowed the slideshow I usually present down to like four slides, just the basics, instead of the details, but obviously, if anybody in the public has any questions, they can ask during the public session.
And if anybody's at home, the whole presentation is still on the website, right?
Correct. I'll get to that at the end. So, in a nutshell, we did the following for the last four months or so, five months, an awful lot, an awful lot of research, talking to teachers, members of the leadership team, community, board members, residents who don't even send their kids to our schools, because everybody obviously is impacted by the school budget, and it all culminates in tonight's presentation of the resolution. Overall, this next year, we are seeing an increase in the services we will be needing to provide our special education population, especially at the lower-grade school, Irving. Those needs include unprecedented medical support that we will now be providing the handful of the kids, but at a great cost. We're also seeing higher tuition rates from charter schools that are being assessed for the kids who go to those schools, and more and more students are leaving our district to go to charter, so we are anticipating costs in that area. We're also seeing a very large increase in the number of homeless students for whom we are responsible, and in my last presentation, a few weeks ago, I talked about that. Tonight, I'm going to give everybody an update about state and national trends that somewhat reflect the trend we're seeing right here in Highland Park. More and more families and guardians are being displaced from their homes and having to go to shelters and other domiciles. We are also seeing an increase in health benefits, in particular, for our employees. And finally, we're seeing the same thing when it comes to state aid, and that's that we're not getting any more than we got last year, despite the increases in all other areas across the board due to inflation and other reasons. The next two slides break down our overall expenditures and then what we'll see on the revenue side. Next year, we are proposing a small increase in supplies from last year, I'm sorry, from this current year. We are also going to be, even though we're paring down the numbers of dollars we're spending on district operations, that includes utilities, installing air conditioning units in rooms that don't have any, et cetera. We are counting for really an increase in utility costs, if anything. We're not going to see a whole lot in the way of capital improvement projects. We found ways to scale back our budget in the area of curriculum development and professional development. Our salaries are going up. That's tied, of course, to the contractual obligation we have to give our employees an increase. We are including in the salary number two new faculty who we must hire to accommodate our special needs kids at Irving School. One is the proposed hiring of a mental health specialist. That'll be either a social worker or a school psychologist who will provide wraparound services for not only the kids, but the families. We'll be flexing that person's school day schedule, so he or she can spend part of the day in school during the day, have the other part out in the community, working with families and guardians in their homes. And the second faculty member we must hire is another special education teacher to respond to the increased numbers of kids we have, particularly in our ABA program, Applied Behavioral Analysis Therapy Program. And there are the, in the last two rows, the increases I noted, the previous slide, benefits and special education costs. Some of those special education costs include out-of-district tuition and transportation. Now, on the revenue side, as I pointed out, we're not getting a whole lot more in state aid. I don't even think you can consider $563 more than flat aid, but it's there. We are looking to bring in a few students from other countries, namely China, and we anticipate being able to generate some tuition revenue to the tune of $100,000 by having those kids spend at least a year in our high school. Because we have been able to be fiscally prudent this fiscal year, we are able to take what we had in both reserves and money's not spent, and offset the tax levy next year by applying what we still have in the bank this year towards next year's budget. That's, I'm referring to the $800,000 and the $189,000 that we'll be using as revenue. We anticipate getting extraordinary aid from the state. We're being relatively conservative. We never know how much we're going to get. We don't get those numbers until July. This is money that the state provides schools to offset special education costs in particular. We're anticipating at least $200,000. If we're fortunate, we'll get more, but we can't count for more, because we just don't know what that number's going to be. And the local tax levy will generate the majority of our revenue. And finally, the other row includes such things as the few tuition-paying students we do have from other towns whose kids come to us. Rental fees, we charge groups like the Chabad House that uses the Bartle School in the summer. It's not a lot of money, $10,000 here, $10,000 there, but it adds up. So, that's actually an increase of about $10,000 from previous years. So, overall, the impact on the taxpayer is, for the average home, assessed at the current assessment value of $150,000, $72 more than previous years. Now, that number is drastically less than previous years, mostly because of the number, the increase in the number of ratables we have in the community. That is businesses, or in our case, mostly new construction, new homes, that have more people paying taxes. And more taxes mean there's more to spread, to go around, and offset the burden on everybody in the community. So, that's why that number, 72, is so much less than previous years. The last slide I'd like to share with you is a reminder that we are fully transparent in our presentation of the budget. We've put our presentation up on the web. There will be tomorrow, you think? Or tonight, depending on how soon Ms. Huffla can upload the document, a user-friendly budget, which will show the community, the board, anybody else who's interested, line by line, what our proposed expenditures are for next year. And that'll be up for downloading either tonight or tomorrow. Any other comments from the Finance and Facilities Committee?
No, you presented it very well. Thank you.
So, with that, I'll hand it back to you, Madam President.
Okay. So, that moves us on to adopting our...
Public comment.
Oh, we do have a public comment on there? Oh, we do, sorry. Sorry, I flipped my page prematurely. So, yes, we have public comment. If, just you? Nope, you're good. Okay. So, we will move on to adopting our budget. That was very dramatic. So, I'm actually going to read this in. Resolution to adopt the 2017-2018 budget. I move that the Board of Education accept the recommendation of the Superintendent to approve the following resolution to adopt the 2017-2018 budget. Resolve that the total budget in the amount of $34,286,918 be approved. General Fund, $31,196,544. Special Revenue Fund, $1,213,876. Debt Service Fund, $1,876,498. The General Fund Tax Levy will be $26,084,657. The Debt Service Fund Tax Levy will be $1,719,912. The maximum travel-related expenditures allotted for the 2017-18 annual school budget is $68,867. The amount allotted for the pre-budget year was $50,434. The amount spent to date is $42,182.92. The budget includes the use of $426,893 in banked caped funds as follows. $284,484 banked from the 2017-2018 budget to support increases in healthcare costs and enrollment increase tax levy waivers, and $142,409 cap adjustment generated in the 2015-2016 budget to support increases in healthcare costs and enrollment increase tax levy waivers. The budget includes withdrawals from the Capital Reserve account for a total amount of $89,000 for the following purposes. Installation of 10 AC units at Bartle School and Highland Park High School. Installation of AC heat unit in Glass Bridge to the Science Wing. That's also in the high school, right? Yeah. The school board members' annual election date changed from April to November in 2012. The 2017-18 budget is at or below the 2% tax levy cap adjusted for waivers permitting the use of bank cap. The supporting documentation of this budget also contains an itemization of certain expenditures required under administrative regulations. Okay, so can I get a motion to adopt the resolution to adopt the 2017-2018 budget?
Could I ask a quick question first?
Sure, of course.
The $426,000, et cetera, in banked cap funds, that first line, the $284,000 and change, is that from this year's budget, 2016 to '17? It can't be banked from the upcoming year's budget, right?
Yes, that's correct. It's a waiver.
Oh, yeah, okay. Oh, it's a waiver?
Correct. It's current year budget, 2017-18 budget.
How can we bank something from the future budget?
It's not banked.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
No, it's a waiver from the budget. It's not banked, yet. But if we didn't use it, we would be banking it.
I see.
Okay, so it's kind of a misnomer.
Thanks, so. So, you need to move, someone to move?
Yes.
I'm happy to move this.
Okay.
Actually, before we have a second, I'd just like to thank a bunch of people.
Sure.
So, I wanted to thank our business manager, Linda Huffla, and Dr. Taylor for their support, and the committee, which is Darcy and Rob and the rest of the board, and also our administrators and teachers and staff, because everyone really pitched in to make this happen, so I wanted to thank you all.
And thank you, Mark, for chairing finance and leading the way through the budget.
My pleasure.
All right, can I get a second?
And I'd be happy to second.
Yay! Okay. Linda, can we get a roll call, please?
We don't have a... Oh, I'm sorry, you seconded. I thought you were seconding his comments.
No, no, no. Although I also seconded his comments.
Ms. Byer?
Yes.
Ms. Simorusti?
Yes.
Ms. Gowen?
Yes.
Ms. Krieger?
Yes.
Ms. McVatt and D'Nicola?
Yes.
Ms. Pietrobono?
Yes.
Ms. Richardson?
Yes.
Mr. Wesslevich?
Yes.
Oh, I'm waiting for the rest of us. That's all of us. Okay, so, sorry, guys, we made you wait way longer than we usually make you wait. Now, it's the Student Representative Report.
Okay. Well, just a warning, we have a lot of news.
It's all right, I'll get comfy.
That's probably a good idea. At Irving, they're celebrating Teacher Appreciation Week, and there's a PTO Wednesday at 6:30 PM. On Thursday and Friday, the PTO will be having their annual plant sale. Okay, so, for Bartle, Bartle students, teachers, staff, and parents have raised $2,499.53, nearly one-quarter of a million pennies for the Initiative Pennies for Patients, Leukemia and Lymphoma Society. The teacher, Debbie Pacora, secured funding through Donors Choose in the amount of $350 for her classroom project called Stand Up for Learning. Approximately 15 Bartle teachers participated in the run-in-the-park 5K on Sunday. These teachers, students, and parents also raised a considerable amount of canned food for this run, because there's also a food drive. Teachers throughout Bartle staged an amazing poetry reading in their classrooms, and students read alliteration, Sonics, Limberths, haikus, and a lot of other types of poetry. And an incredible number of Bartle parents were in attendance as audience members for these presentations. Bartle engaged its largest-ever school-wide autism awareness initiative this year, and students have pledged their support to learning, understanding, and supporting students and individuals living with autism. Bartle's PTO provided teachers with an amazing teacher appreciation lunch that was served by PTO parent Liz Rosner. For the middle school, on May 12th, eighth-grade students will be taking their annual trip to Hershey Park. This month, they're highlighting seventh graders Anna Shiu and Richard Xu. Anna and Richard ranked among the top 16 entries in the Library of Congress Letters to the Author Essay Competition, and their entry is focused on the international refugee crisis and animal rights. The middle school's students' action team won silver in the state championships. These students competed with other schools from New Jersey, presenting their service learning projects.
I can finish up. That's a lot.
Okay. The seventh grade traveled to medieval times as a culmination of their world history studies, which is always so much fun. I still remember when we went. That was incredible.
That's part of high school, okay.
Sure. 120 students were amazed at the reenactments of medieval tournaments and jostling as they ate with their fingers. Yum! The middle school held its Diversity Day last week, which we already discussed, and of course, it was a huge success. The middle school students had the opportunity of making a variety of workshops and listening to speakers that included speakers like a Holocaust survivor, Tova Friedman, the Highland Park African-American Project with John Holm, presentation on immigrants and refugees with Seth Capravale, and the event concluded with Dr. Mikey Fallon performing "You Don't Know Me Until You Know Me," a work that highlighted empathy, acceptance, and avoiding stereotyping. The workshops included Rising India, Tibetan Meditation, Yoga, Disability Awareness, Pinup for Peace, Linguistic Diversity, Chinese Calligraphy, Spoken Word, Masking Tape, Murals, the Muslim Experience, Jewish Culture, Gender Justice, and LGBT. It's awesome. George Street Playhouse Artists in Residence are working with our sixth-grade students in their language arts classes, so this is still in the middle school. The students will develop and present mythology plays from various cultures. The eighth-grade technology class will be traveling to their virtual classroom or something like that. The students have been working with junior achievement lessons in financial literacy and will travel to Edison to put their learning to use as they navigate through real-life financial scenarios and compete against other schools. Wow! Many of our sixth-grade students were also at the Highland Park Street Fair, so there were four groups that set up stations, and at least 20 students were helping to raise awareness, collect products, and fundraise for St. Peter's Breast Cancer Research Center, and they raised $158 in four hours. So, they were really thrilled, and there's an invitation to be the Change Night on Thursday, June 5th, where all students will be presenting their final projects, and judges will select the top projects. Three middle school teachers are at Bartle training for the full implementation of restorative practices. The middle school began the primary steps to implement these restorative practices this year, beginning some circles and classes based on topics related to these students. Okay, finally, to the high school.
I'll take the stage, okay.
Yeah, sure. So, the DECA team recently returned from a very successful trip to the International Career Development Conference in Anaheim, California. So, 15 students traveled with Mrs. Harper, Mr. Harper, and Ms. Trico, those are our advisors, to California, some of them competing and some of them participating in leadership in business workshops. Of the group, the team of seniors Mashood Hussain, Brent Sklaruk, Michelle Phan, and sophomore Mackenzie Volpert placed in the top 10 in the world at the conference.
Wow! Wow!
This was also the only New Jersey team to make the finalist category in any chapter manual, so, yeah, because Canada usually takes all the awards at ICDC.
Not just Canada, just Ontario.
Yeah, yeah, it's just Ontario.
I blame Justin Trudeau.
The Model UN in Congress Club is holding their one-day conference, Central Jersey Model UN in Congress, in May 2017, on May 20th. So, CJ Monk is actually our biggest fundraiser, which provides financial aids to students who need it, especially if we're going to be doing another Mexico trip next year. One of our biggest goals is to make sure that finance will never be a barrier to someone who deserves to go. So, this year, we're actually opening the luncheon to community members as well, and the luncheon will provide an international selection of foods, and Seth Capravale is going to be our guest keynote speaker, and he's going to host a panel with a few refugees that he's worked with to discuss the effects of globalization through the lens of the refugee crisis. So, we would like to extend an invitation to any interested community members to attend the luncheon and panel. The admission fee is $20, but that includes food costs, and we're actually sharing part of the proceeds with the Global Grace Cafe to support them, too.
Terrific.
Yeah.
The boys tennis team has had a great record of 10 wins to one loss, and they're on track to win in the white division. The baseball team is doing great, too. Baseball team is 9-4, fourth in Central New Jersey Group One in points. The ultimate team won 3-1 at a tournament yesterday. The girls track team long jump relay, is that a thing? Broke the county record.
Yeah. It was, no, it's awesome. Freshman Rebecca has the craziest long jump that I've, like, it's just amazing. The girls have been doing very, very well. Yeah.
Yeah, the girls always do well, though.
Which record did they break? I'm sorry.
Long jump relay, apparently.
The county record.
County record.
Some of the girls recently ran at the Penn Relays and broke school records, and they were ecstatic about running against Sydney McLoughlin.
Sydney McLoughlin.
Sydney McLoughlin, she was an Olympian, right?
Yeah, she's an Olympian, and it's wonderful. It was over the weekend that I saw like one of my friend's Instagram posts, and it was of her and two other girls who had run the relays, and I remember the caption reading something like, "I can't believe that Sydney McLoughlin stepped on my foot. I'm like so happy right now I can cry." While we were racing, it was hilarious.
And finally, the high school is finishing up AP testing this week.
What a bummer of a note to leave on.
Being done with AP testing is like one of the best things.
Well, I still have my AP Calc test tomorrow.
I'm so sorry.
Leave whenever you need to, Michelle.
Oh.
And congratulations, that's amazing.
Thank you.
Holy moly.
I very, like...
That was an awesome report. Anybody have any questions? Kudos.
There's a lot going on at our schools.
Yeah, absolutely. Amazing, amazing things happening across all of the schools.
Definitely.
I just want to give a huge shout-out to all of the students that were out at the street fair, representing the causes that they felt very strongly about. They drained many dollar bills from my pockets as I walked down the street.
Oh, yeah, definitely.
And a big shout-out to Dr. Suzanne Ackley, who has become sort of a roving photographer for our events that are happening in our schools, and we actually have some fantastic pictures. I'm looking at a picture of you right now, actually, but we have some fantastic pictures from Dr. Ackley that she took during the street fair of the students in the various areas performing or tabling.
Yeah, I don't know if it was mentioned, but the high school, I think, also tabled like through Model UN.
So, the high school had students there representing Model UN. So the high school had students there representing Model UN Global Citizenship and Invisible Issues, but there were also...
Yeah, and WY was there.
Yeah, and there were also DECA students that were actually getting a jumpstart on raising money for their DECA manuals next year. So yes, there were students advertising the color one, but also students advertising the Make-A-Wish Walk, and I think, I was just speaking with Carolyn Hua, yeah, who's working on the Make-A-Wish Walk next year, and she said that they raised at least $100 just in getting donations there. And there's me.
Yeah, no, it was amazing. We had, the high school had a tent, the district had a tent, the HPEA had a tent. It was just like a kumbaya love fest at the street fair yesterday.
It was awesome.
District row.
We had our own block.
All right, thank you so much.
No problem.
Wait, how many more meetings do we have, you guys?
Not that many.
We only have three more meetings. So are you guys already working on the process of selecting reps for...
Yeah, we have to discuss that with Mr. Lassiter and Ms. Barka and Ms. Steinberg, but we've been talking about...
So we usually do that at the last meeting in June, right? You'll bring the...
That's when they get into it.
Yeah, and a couple people have actually approached me about wanting to do this next year.
You guys make it look so much fun.
It's gonna be great. I'm excited.
Thank you, ladies. All right, so we will move on to Dr. Taylor's report.
Okay, I'd like to stand up for this one. I have an audience. First thing I'd like to do before I talk about HIB is follow-up a question Mr. Krieger asked regarding the homeless data I shared. We were wondering why we saw such a big jump in our numbers of homeless students, whether there was a trend here statewide and nationally. So I pulled down some data from the USDOE site that collected all this homeless data that ranges from 2012 to 2015. I'm not going to show you a slide, I'm just going to read off my notes. Just some random facts you might find interesting that I think speaks a little bit to what we're seeing here in Highland Park. 21 states have seen a growth in student homelessness of 10% or more, including New Jersey. Now, remember, this is from 2012 to 2015. There has been a 34% increase in homeless students since the recession ended. The USDOE is considering the recession to have ended the summer of 2009. So since the recession ended, a 34% increase overall in homeless students.
I'm sorry, you said 2009?
That's what the DOE is identifying as the end of the recession, summer of 2009.
The United States Department of Education, or the New Jersey Department of Education.
Correct. This is the Department of Ed.
The U.S. Department of Education.
Correct, U.S.
Okay, no, I'm sorry to stop you. Just kind of shocked.
The number of unaccompanied homeless youth, so these are kids who experience homelessness apart from their families, so they could be fostered, they could be living by themselves in shelters, saw the most increase, most marked increase, 21% over three years. Now, right here in Highland Park, we have at least one unaccompanied homeless youth. The grade that we're seeing, when we looked at the numbers more closely, with the largest number of students experiencing homelessness is kindergarten. 47% of all the students identified as both, and this is going back to the national trends, 47% of all students identified as both homeless and enrolled in school in general are elementary-aged or younger. So a lot of our younger kids across the country are finding themselves without permanent residence. Majority of students experiencing homelessness, and this is our case, do not live in shelters. So they might be sharing space with other people, they might be in other institutions outside of shelter network. Over 76% of homeless families, and this is, again, I'm going back to the national data because we don't have this kind of, we don't have this kind of numbers. Over 76% of homeless families stay with other people temporarily. 7% are staying in motels, hotels, or some other kind of arrangement. What else? Just disclaimer, the data doesn't include homeless infants and toddlers. These are, obviously, these are school-age kids we're talking about, so we don't know what life is like for 2-, 3-, 4-year-olds, 1-, 2-, 3-, 4-year-olds.
So this would only be pre-K through 12, though?
Correct. So pre-K is grade, is, uh, age 4?
3-, 4-, depending, sorry.
So talking, I guess, infant to 2. Yeah, so it's disturbing.
Quick question about the kindergarten number? You said that 42% of, is that in Highland Park, 42% of homeless?
You know what, I need to clarify, I'll go back to my notes and see. I'm going to make sure I'm not referring to the national numbers. Let me go back to that, but...
That might have some correlation with our...
Well, the grade for us, I do believe, is the largest number of students is experienced, is in kindergarten.
It is in kindergarten, huh.
I don't have numbers, but it's the greatest number.
That's presumably related to the issues that we've had at Irving, I would assume, with the increased mental health needs.
How, I'm sorry?
Is that sort of consistent with the increased number of mental health needs that we've had at Irving? I mean, we're experiencing a lot of kids that are just...
I can't answer that question, that I don't know. I mean, I can tell you that I have a meeting with Allison Huff, who's the town's borough social worker, on next Monday, to see what we can do. I just got a tip from Darcy that there might be some, a resident here in Highland Park who's an executive director for an organization that works to help homeless families. We might connect with them. So I'm going to have DeeDee Deecher, who's like an important person right now, our main homeless liaison, reach out to that individual as well.
And I'm really hopeful about that. This was like another street fair coincidence yesterday, but I ran into former freeholder Jim Polos, and we got to chatting, and this came up in the course of our conversation, and he was like, "Oh, you need to talk, too." And like, so it's Elaine O'Donnell, who's the executive director of Ending Homelessness in Middlesex County. Like, well, there you go, that's exactly what we need to do. So I'm really hopeful that that will be a really, really positive resource for us. This is just such a frustrating situation.
It really is.
Can you put that data together for us, Scott, and email it out? Because, again, I'm not such a great, I don't do so well with auditory processing.
Sure, no, no problem. I'm going to have to sit down again because I'm having a clicker problem, technical error. So I'm going to sit down, I want to phase into the next part of my presentation. So what the community might not know is that, once a month, the Board of Education, in closed session, receives from me a report about our, besides our discipline incidences in general, specifically a separate report about harassment, intimidation, and bullying referrals that we get from, could be parents, teachers, or from kids. And in those meetings, we have lengthy discussions about not just the investigation part of the whole process, but the what happens after part, which is what I've heard loud and clear from the board, and I would agree, is the more important piece of this whole process. What do we do to help aggressors, kids who are allegedly bullying, harassing, intimidating, and then, of course, the victims? So I want to spend a few minutes talking about the information I've collected from the boots-on-the-ground, the guidance counselors, the HIB coordinators. Every building has an HIB point person, a coordinator, and then we have a district coordinator. The district coordinator is Mrs. Azimoa, who is our teen center director at the schools. And at Irving, Ms. Stevens, our guidance counselor, is the, I'll refer to it as HIB coordinator. At BARTLE, Ms. Kirk is our HIB coordinator, Mr. Lobialco is our middle school coordinator, and Ms. Hayes, guidance counselor at the high school, is our coordinator up there. Before I get to talking about how we work with kids who are involved in HIB, I want to just go over a couple of key things that the board, the community, might not be aware of. When the state enacted the law, which at first threw some people for a real curve, a curveball, a real loop, because it was brand-new, and there were a lot of questions. It did define what would be considered by law an act of harassment, intimidation, or bullying. And it's changed a little bit over time. But on this slide, which the board can also access on their screens, I've placed downloadable resources, which I'll present on my webpage to the community tonight. You can download original documents of some of the things that we're using right now internally when we get involved in a HIB case. So anyway, on this slide, I'm not going to read this word for word, you can read it yourself, is one part of a definition of what's considered harassment, intimidation, or bullying. I'm having a major breakdown here, hold on one second. I am going to go back to my presentation. The second definition is on this slide. It's the definition that our site coordinators have internalized, but more helpful for the site coordinators when determining if something that comes their way is considered, according to code, to be harassment, intimidation, or bullying, is like a litmus test or a checklist. The snapshot on this screen of a larger document you can download by clicking that little hand comes from one of the resources we use through Strauss Esme, the organization that also provides us policy information. It happens to be the same information our board attorney, Jonathan Bush, has provided our teachers. So this is not just Strauss Esme, this is pretty common stuff. I want to drill into what the threshold generally says. These three steps are the steps that a coordinator would follow when a case is referred to him or her. Now, just because something is not considered harassment, intimidation, or bullying according to the threshold or the checklist, doesn't mean it's not of concern to the coordinator. However, it could, it might not fall under the HIB category, it might be a discipline issue, it might be an issue, and it's a personal problem between two kids. Regardless, it calls for follow-up of some kind. So I don't want the community or the board to think that if something is not considered HIB, we just walk away from it. We do investigate it, and we do follow-up, and if it means counseling or some kind of support services, we'll provide that. However, if a student is deemed to be a victim of harassment, intimidation, or bullying, and/or there are offenders at play, each school has a protocol or a set of responses to help the kids. And we do provide support for both the offenders and the victims. For instance, the aggressors, I should say, I'm still playing with the terminology. The state likes to use the term aggressor when referring to a student who's considered having harassed, intimidated, or bullied. This is a little picture of the BARTLE sheet that they use, CRIP sheet, they refer to it, when engaging in an investigation. The last step is about the interventions and/or consequences, and I'll let you take a look at that yourself before I drill it a little deeper. Now, even though restorative circles and practice sessions, number 1 and 9 are listed here, disclaimer, we are not, we haven't institutionally used them across the board. We're piloting restorative circles. I've talked a lot about restorative practices. Today is actually the first day of four-day training for our middle and high school teachers and some counselors from the teen center, one counselor from the teen center, who are being trained to train their peers at the middle and high school on how to facilitate a restorative justice circle, which is usually what you would do in response to a discipline incident, and restorative circles, which is the proactive part of the process, what we would build into the schedule somehow to engage kids in regular conversations around circles. BARTLE is interested in the approach, and so we have been pulling Miss Crane, who is the teacher and student support person, into some of the trainings that we're doing. So she has been facilitating some circles. But our teachers aren't using them en masse at BARTLE, and we don't have plans for them to use them until potentially 2018, 2019. We want to first roll them out at the middle and high school.
So I'm sorry, Scott, those forms, can you go back for a second? That, I missed this part. This part came from the state? This, like, checklist thing, or...
This, yeah, this is just for BARTLE. So I'm sorry, what's the question?
Who, the form, this is like a form that we created?
That we created, forgive me, at BARTLE. Ms. Kirk and Ms. Crane created it with Mr. Benjamin's guidance. The Social Emotional Learning Lab, number 13, is, it's coming back, but it won't be fully in place until next year. But Ms. Maiden, one of our 2nd-grade teachers, has already been using some strategies from the past, because she's actually involved in a certification program, and her project is to restore the Social Emotional Learning Lab. So she's taken a lead and doing some work with Ms. Crane and Ms. Kirk when we respond to situations regarding HIB. Restorative circles are more prevalent at middle and high school than they are at BARTLE, but again, they're not being institutionalized yet. They do play a role in how we have been responding to incidences, and I thought I would share with you a breakout of what they're looking like and some of the things that we incorporate in those circles. So the circles are conversations that include a teacher or a counselor, the kids who were victimized, or who were the aggressors. And the purpose of the circles ultimately is to have all the people who were affected by a negative incident be able to empathize with each other's feelings and understand each other's feelings and how they were impacted by whatever, by the incident itself. But we do provide a lot of additional support services. And like I said, the restorative circles aren't happening on a regular basis. What is happening on a regular basis is what you see on this slide. And these things are happening in all of our schools. I collected all this disinformation, and what I did find is a trend in all the input I received. A lot of the work, though, in the area of trigger identification, and boundary setting, and emotional self-identification, and self-regulation, that's happening down at Irving in particular. We haven't gotten a lot of HIB reports from Irving students. I don't think we've gotten any, as a matter of fact, now that I think about it, since I've been here. However, we do have issues. There are kids who aggress. And so what Ms. Stevens does is what you see here in the upper right, upper-left corner. At the middle and high school, I'm sorry, at the high school, and the reps at the table can probably vouch for this. We have a pretty robust peer mediation program.
I was just about to say that these restorative circles, they sound like the peer mediation, and when you mentioned that not all incidents are HIB incidents, that there are some that are just, that are peer mediation. I was speaking with an alumna who is actually a member of peer mediation for, I think, like, all four years of high school or something like that. Or maybe it wasn't all four years, but it was a while, and she was telling me how, like, most of that is like navigating, like, getting these two people to navigate social situations, or like delving into like years-long, like, social, like, drama, but nothing that's really like bullying, bullying, just like conflict between students and like figuring a way to resolve, like, issues between like different groups and things like that. Like, kind of like, sort of like click-related or like social, more social drama. Yeah, than like, than HIB, obviously, which is very serious.
Yeah, I was almost on the same page as Michelle and was going to ask later, like, how maybe peer mediation could possibly factor into this new strategy? Because while it's not really a restorative justice circle, it has a similar idea of having people understand each other's point of view, why they did the things they did, and like, reaching the same sort of conclusion, even if it's not at the HIB level.
The feedback I receive from the coordinators in each school is that they do, when they find that there are kids repeatedly getting wrapped up in situations like this, they will institute regular follow-ups. And the most regular follow-ups are happening with Lisa Stevens, Ms. Stevens at Irving, mostly Ms. Crane at BARTLE. And Ms. Rexer, obviously, is involved in the middle school, but it's a whole lot about the teen center, the middle and the high school. If I could expand the teen center, I would. Fortunately, we have another set of interns coming next year, so we will be back to five or six, depending on whether the sixth intern is a part-time or full-time, staff members in the teen center. Would you agree? Would you agree about the teen center?
Oh, yeah.
Okay. That's a big, big part of the whole process.
Do they have less this year?
I'm sorry?
Do they have less interns this year? You're making it sound like that would be an increase.
We have the same number, no, it's going to be the same numbers, same numbers. And incidentally, our interns are rock stars. Remember, we're getting them from the Rutgers Psychology Department, which is one of the top in the country, if not the world. U.S. News and World reports that, that.
Well, then it must be true.
And some of you around the table can read into that a little bit. I have to say, overall, what the research I did over the last week led me to realize is we do need to be more consistent in the kind of follow-up we're providing, and I would like to see more structure to it, more institutionalization. I feel that even though I got a lot of good stuff from the coordinators, we could do better having like a lockstep protocol. So I'd like to see, for instance, this CRIP sheet maybe be duplicated and just solely fixed on this last step. Maybe there's a CRIP sheet for what we do to support the aggressors and the victims, not just the CRIP sheet for the whole process, right, the investigation and then the response. So those are just a couple of lessons that I have learned from this process going forward to next year. So that's it, that's my last slide, and I hope I shed a little light on our efforts.
I'm just curious, how many HIB reports have we had in the past?
That's a great question.
Do you know?
So this past month, so the board looks at, and then approves, or not, the prior month's report. So in April, we had two referrals district-wide, both were not confirmed to be HIB cases. Prior to that, I think we had three in March, maybe four, I have to go back to the numbers. I'm sorry?
We had either four or five in March.
But I can get that number for you. In fact, before we leave tonight, I'll find out for you. I have all the HIB reports on my computer.
Yeah, because I was just, I don't know, but maybe because I'm also like, maybe sheltered, that I feel like, I always thought that maybe Highland Park wouldn't have that many. So what, like, I guess, what is that number in comparison with like the national average or like another school that would be comparable, or state average, yeah, or a school comparable to?
You have to report on this once a year, don't you? Don't you have to report out on this once a year?
I feel like I saw, yeah.
Yeah, I feel like I've seen.
And I'm looking for data that I might, I'll pull up some data and I'll bring it up at some point, show you more, tell you more about that.
Okay. Does anybody else have any questions or comments for Scott? No? Okay, so we will then move on to our, oh, thank you, Scott, we'll move on to our committee reports. Hi, Michelle.
Hi. So we had our curriculum committee meeting just previous to the board meeting beginning tonight, and you can see the field trip request sheet. It should be attached in the packet. There's, you know, end-of-the-year field trips starting. So in the high school and in BARTLE, they are doing some local trips, I would call it local, to New Brunswick and also to New York City, to the 9/11 Memorial Museum and the high school. And BARTLE is doing a special trip for their fifth graders, and they're traveling over to the high school. They're walking, and they're going to be visiting the high school science fair. So that is super fiscally responsible and interesting. I thought that was cute. And then the music in the parks trip, as usual, there's the Hershey Park trip for the middle school chorus and band, I'm sorry, yeah, chorus and band. And then in the high school, there is, at the bottom, you can see that there is a safety ambassador presentation to first graders for the Irving Primary School. So the high schoolers will be visiting. Following the field trips, there is the resolution to approve the HIB incident report for March and April, number three. Number four is a resolution to approve a half-day meeting of the high school English department with Dr. Suzanne Ackley, supervisor of Curriculum and Instruction in Humanities. And number five is a resolution to approve a motivational speaker, I believe. His name is John Paul Gonzalez, and he works for a firm called A Vision in Motion, and he is potentially going to be hired as the keynote speaker for the district-wide PD in service Tuesday, September 5th of this year. And this was a motivational speaker that the teachers had seen, a handful of teachers had seen previous and had recommended. So, yeah, this comes directly from them. And that was it.
Short and sweet.
Short and sweet.
Okay.
For once.
Anybody, anybody have any questions for Michelle? Okay, so move on to finance facilities, Mark?
Yes, so the finance committee met before the board meeting as well, and we discussed the current state of the finances ending out this year, and we'll have more on that over the next month, just to see what kind of surplus we'll have to fund the carryover into next year, which we will have enough, the part of the budget that's slotted next year from surplus from this year should be sufficient. Items number two and three on this list are the usual general bill list, athletic bill list, cafeteria bill list, and travel and related expenses lists. Item four is contractors for professional development. This includes the A Vision in Motion, which Michelle mentioned, advancing opportunities, which I believe is special education contracting, and the right-to-know hazard communication consulting, which is mandatory right-to-know staff training. Number five and six are both special education out of district placements, including bedside instruction in number six. Item seven is a grant from Fuse Studio valued up to $26,000. This includes challenges like building a dream home, making jewelry, site licenses to the Fuse Innovation Package, 3D printer, et cetera. Item number eight includes the increase in school lunch prices for 2017-18, which are going up from 10 cents or 5 cents, depending on the different schools. Items number, and then item nine is the contract renewal with the food services company, Pomptonian. Numbers 10, number 10 is the resolution to approve the student accident insurance with Ballinger Specialty Group. 11 is a resolution to approve the contract with Computer Solutions for Accounting and Payroll Software. And item 12 is purchase of equipment, which is flow-through state aid to private schools. There's one change to that, which is that it says now, Middlesex Regional Educational Services Commission, and it should read Educational Services Commission of New Jersey. Otherwise, it's exactly the same.
Okay.
Oh, I'm sorry, one other thing. Lynda did tell us at our meeting that we'll be a few other items coming up next week that just came onto the radar. So we'll be reading this three or four new resolutions that'll be coming, but we'll see them later, later next week.
So I do have a quick question that I didn't think to ask when we had our finance meeting earlier. And I haven't read too much about this yet, but what I understand is that the USDAO is starting to roll back some of the initiatives over the last few years to make school lunches healthier, and they're going to go backwards. Is there?
What do you mean by backwards?
That they're going to, some of the requirements that they've had to put in place over the last few years of?
Well, there was one about the size of a bun or something, or the level of white bread or something.
I think there have been a number of them over the last few years, but my understanding is that they're all being, you know, in this kind of like mass deregulation. These are some of the regulations that are going to disappear.
Dorsey, there was something in the paper this past week.
Yeah, yeah, I just haven't had a chance to read all the details.
Holding back, I think, on what constitutes a vegetable.
Right, exactly.
So catch up maybe a vegetable again.
So I was also saying, there was also a statement saying that it was sort of, it wasn't a mandatory rollback, that it was, could be adoptable locally.
Exactly, and that's what I'm wondering, if we can head this off with Pomptonian and say, you know, we don't want to go, we're not interested in going backwards. We understand that maybe going backwards would cost us less money or something like that, but we're not interested in having our school lunches being any unhealthier than they already are.
Yeah.
Yeah, if anything, I would.
No. School lunches, no, they've gotten better.
She was just saying, yeah, school lunches have gotten a lot better. There's like this, there's this like panini like wrap machine in, it's like a separate section from the hot lunches, but you can get like fresh salads or like fresh sandwiches that can get grilled.
And we're not interested in any of that going away.
Yeah, it's really, okay.
I happened to meet with Pomptonian at the school boards meeting last October. They were trying to sell us on our district, signing up with them, except they didn't realize that we were in a district that was already a customer. And they gave me lots of examples of the kind of lunches they've kind of upgraded to, and it looked very, very good from what I remember and what my kids remember. So I think it's improved a lot over the years. And we wanted to stay that way, I agree.
So no worries, we're not, we will.
The pizza's still not the highest quality.
How bad can pizza be, really?
Just a note, that one public comment that I read that one time from a student who was really interested in getting white bread, I posted on Facebook if there were any questions for our current board meeting, and that was unfortunately the only one that I got, but he just, he really wants to know how he can get white bread one last time as a school lunch before he graduates.
Why won't you give me the white bread?
I don't know what his obsession is with it, but I did give him Dr. Taylor's email and Dorsey's email, so he can contact you guys about that.
Dr. Taylor will be running to Stop &amp; Shop.
I think that was an excellent solution.
When he graduates.
Delegate, delegate.
The weekly Stop &amp; Shop run. Add it to your to-do list.
Open campus, Stop &amp; Shop.
I'm taking my sabbatical around that time. I'm not sure if I mentioned that to you.
All right. With that, we will move on to personnel with Judy.
Okay. Our full Personnel Committee meeting is actually tomorrow, so I don't have a lot to report on. Dr. Taylor and I did meet, just the two of us, to discuss agenda items. And so what you'll see tonight is, number two is a resolution to approve the Source for Teacher subs. We have one maternity replacement for a special ed teacher over at Irving. We also have a resolution to appoint a part-time technician, Alexandra Lasko, the previous person moved on to a full-time job. Number five is the resolution to approve the following appointment of non-tenured professional staff. So you have a list of all the non-tenured teachers that are coming back, along with their salaries, but please note that the salaries may be revised upon completion of contract negotiations. So that goes on for a few pages. And then, after that, wow, it's very long. We also have a listing of the tenured teachers and their salaries. We have the office staff, tenured office staff, non-tenured office staff, administrators, non-tenured, so on and so forth. Then we have the number 13, which is the 12-month confidential and non-vograining union employees, the superintendent, 14, 15, business administrator, and 16 would be the teen center in place. Okay, 17 is the resolution to appoint the maternity leave replacement. I don't remember what 18. Resolution to approve compensation to the following staff for revision of the BARTLE Elementary School Report Card. We do have a resolution to accept a resignation on number 19 of a high school science teacher. 20, resignation of an ELL teacher. Hopefully, at an upcoming board meeting, we will start to see some new hires come here. We did get some applicants through the job pair at Montclair and Rutgers. We also have resumes coming in through AppleTrack, so that will be coming down the pike.
I have to tell you, we're having tremendous success in the area of finding child study team and educational support services people. Next week, I'll recommend a speech therapist, occupational therapist, probably a mental health specialist, I think it's psychologist, recommended by somebody we know. And yeah, we're really, they're all rock stars, I mean, at least according to the recommendations we're getting and the interviews.
What about the physics position?
Recent resignations, so we're on the hunt. Yeah, we're pulling on our network, some folks in the community, UF connections, Dr. Nikosia as well. We're doing the same thing for the ELL position. Kaya Schlesinger, who's the head of the state professional organization for ELL teachers, is reaching out to her network. So we're not going to, I don't think we're going to be publishing an ad in the Star Ledger at this point for those positions.
Dorsey, I had a question about nine through 13.
Okay.
So those are our administrators rehiring, and it talks about a contract. We have a contract with the administrators, so, and I'm sure those salaries are not correct. I think those are old salaries there. So if we could, at least some of them that I see, I know we negotiated different numbers. So it's nine and, I'm sorry, nine through 12, nine through 12 all have different amounts.
Good catch, I'll make sure we look into that and talk to Mr. Lasker.
We would get into a lot of trouble, I'd say.
Well, I fear. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Good luck tomorrow.
Good luck tomorrow.
Good night, guys.
I have a quick question. I don't know if this is the right time to ask, but, so it looks to me like we're doing number two, to approve Source for Teacher substitutes for 2016-27, 2017, sorry. So that's for the remainder of the school year, right? If there were a teacher that we were averse to rehiring or approving for the remainder of the school year, as board members, what is the procedure for that? Because generally what happens is this whole list is given to us, and there's, I don't know, 100 names on there, it seems like, just to approve the names that, you know, go through. But if we were to want a fuller discussion on a substitute, would personnel be the place to do it, or, I mean, I'm assuming that this is a confidential issue, so it's not like we could have the discussion, you know, at the table, but I've never experienced this kind of issue before.
Well, if it's a non-tenure teacher, you're talking about?
She's talking about Source for Teacher.
A Source for Teacher substitute.
Oh, sorry, Source for Teacher teacher specifically.
Because this is kind of like a, you know, a procedural thing. We just kind of take the entire list and approve it. But if we were to have a name or two that we didn't want to approve, what is the?
These aren't Source for Teachers teachers we're approving.
No, she's talking about the Source for Teachers, there is a.
Item number two.
Break out the list.
Oh, I'm sorry, item two.
Yeah, so there's no list available.
I think it would be best if you brought to the attention of the Personnel Chair, and then we discuss it. And in fact, if you have concerns, we're meeting tomorrow night, as Judy pointed out.
Okay, so then I will.
And then I could take it from there, and I'll probably call Jonathan Bush and just get some guidance.
No, no, it's fine.
Make sure we're doing everything on the up and up.
Excellent, thank you.
Okay, if no one has any other questions for Judy, we'll move on to policies and regulations. Ann?
Okay, you guys have seen these policies numerous times. So we will be voting to adopt them at the next meeting if, I'm proposing that we vote to adopt them, I should say. There are some changes that I will be, I'll be proposing that we make to two of the policies, and I will make sure that Susan has these proposed changes so we can have hard copies for our voting meeting. The changes are, for the most part, just linguistic. Of course, policy 5116, homeless children, we're almost there with it in terms of like getting rid of all the extra verbiage that remained after our committee editing process. But as you'll see in an email I sent around, just to give you access to this, there's a paragraph that needs to be deleted, there's a sentence that needs to go. paragraph that needs to be deleted, there's a sentence that needs to go. We are also going to change the homeless, sorry, the school district liaison for the education of homeless children to the supervisor of educational services. Currently, Ms. Deicher, 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 Deicher?
Decher.
Decher, Ms. Decher. We're talking about the homeless student policy, and we're gonna, it says right now in the proposed version that the school district liaison will be the supervisor of ed services. And as we discussed, I'm going to propose that, you proposed, and now I'm going to propose that we change that person to the supervisor of ed services.
Correct.
Is that the correct title?
Yeah, yeah, she's in the trenches, so I think she's the best person for that role.
Perfect.
And Susie will play the other one.
And that deals with the provision in here somewhere that says the homeless liaison and the foster care liaison cannot be the same person, for whatever reason. So there's a couple changes to 5116 that I've emailed out to the board. There's one other change to 2415.30, educational stability for children in foster care. I don't remember what the change was, I'm just looking. Oh, it was a comma, never mind. You guys will see the proposed new comma next time. The other policies, I'm recommending them in the form we considered them in last time.
Is it an Oxford comma?
No, it's not an Oxford comma, it's just a regular old comma comma. It's beyond unexciting.
All right. Does anybody have any questions or concerns about any of the policies?
Nope.
Okay, although Scott, I thought it might be interesting to talk about the work that you guys have done since we had the discussion about the administering an opioid antidote policy.
Oh, yeah.
Thanks for asking about that. Ann Gallin, I think, brought it to my attention last meeting, and I went to the nurses with it, and they jumped on doing research. In fact, Alana Wallach, our middle school nurse, took the lead on this and created a packet that she's handing out to all the teachers, I'm sorry, all the nurses, to give them some guidance on administering Narcon, Narcon, right? We are actually going to train all of the administrators and nurses on this Tuesday coming up, next Tuesday, I'm sorry, the 16th, for 45 minutes in the Irving Media Center. So we're, thank you for that.
Thank you for jumping on it so quickly. That's fantastic. That'd be great to bring back to the Board of Health. I like it when we can bring them back positive noobs about what we're.
Yeah.
I wanted to add, just in terms of procedural stuff, we, I sat down with Scott and Susan, and we talked about sort of a workflow for the policies, because as you, as board members may or may not know, we have a huge stack of policies that we are supposed to be reviewing. Most of them have, most of them are policies as to which Strauss Esme has recommended really trivial changes, but, you know, we should go through them and just make sure. So the Policy Committee will be meeting, I believe, on May 22nd. A few more emails remain to be sent out, and at that time, we're hopefully going to have a bunch of policies to put on the next, the next agenda after that for first reading.
So the last round of this that we did, like Finance, we went through ours, but they haven't made it through.
Correct, they haven't gone to this committee yet.
Okay, so that you guys will be looking at those at this meeting? So Scott?
Hopefully not looking at them. Hopefully we will be like, okay, everybody fine with these?
Yeah, yeah.
Because Mark's already gone through them, you've gone through them. Yeah, I'm sorry, we just, the last policy meeting was a little bit of a mishmash, too many things on the agenda, thanks to my poor agenda setting, so we just did not get to policies.
No, but there were the ones that came up that they said were urgent, that we had to do.
Sure, right, right, right. But that was, it turned out to be like five policies. We had a number of other policies. We just need to push onto an agenda. Some of them have trivial changes, some of them have important changes that are recommended by, required by the state. So hopefully at our next meeting on May 22nd, we will have a giant, ginormous pile, which we will then place on the next workshop agenda.
Which will remind ourselves is way better than doing the entire annual review or biannual review of like, so it may, sometimes it may seem like a lot, but it's a lot less than what it used to be, and it's more targeted and streamlined.
It's a little less organized. It was a little less organized. Now we are getting more organized.
Yes.
Years after I started working on this.
It's a process, yes. And so you are going to get us more information on the one so we could move that LICE policy through.
Yes. Yes, I'm ready to go by the time we meet, so when we meet, I'll have it.
And then everybody brace yourselves, because the second that hits an agenda, it's on. It's gonna be on. Okay, so that brings us to Equity and Excellence with Sharice.
Okay, so we did not meet, we have a meeting coming up on the 23rd. The Discipline Study Group also will have another meeting coming up. We are, Scott is in the process of identifying a common date that will work for the largest number of folks to meet with that program again. The other thing that I just wanted to let people know about, if you are familiar at all with the Program Teaching Tolerance, which is a project at the Southern Poverty Law Center, they've got some really fantastic webinars that are completely free. You just sign up online. I did one of them a while back, and I've been meaning to go back and do more of them. They have a whole series called Equity Matters, and I think it's like four different webinars now that are offered, and they're completely free of charge, really interesting. And although you lose the dynamic portion of the discussion, if you can get in on one of the webinars when they're happening, they're fantastic, because, you know, people are actually messaging back and forth, and you're having a dialogue with the presenters there, but you can go back and you can go through the whole process and watch the whole webinar after the fact as well. So the one that I did was called Equity Matters: Understanding Equity Literacy, but like I said, I think there's like three or four different ones specifically on equity matters now. So check it out.
Okay.
Cool, I'm looking right now, they look really fantastic. So interesting.
A little bit later, under Old Business, we're going to talk about the Tracking Discussion Group. It sounds like there may be some way that we could work those materials into that. I mean, everything that we do doesn't have to be books. I mean, we could.
Sure. Certainly do a webinar as a group and then have a discussion about the webinar.
That'd be great.
Okay. All right. So we'll bring that into the next one. Okay, did you have anything else?
That's it.
Okay, anybody have any questions for Sharice? Nope. Okay, so that brings us to Public Comment. Highland Park Board of Education welcomes public participation. Is reserved this time for your comments? You guys, you both good?
Yep.
Yep.
330 South Third Avenue, here in Highland Park. And I've been a little bit out of the loop, so I saw budget on the, on the agenda for tonight, and I was like, oh, I've got to catch up with what's going on with the, but I'm glad to hear you passed it, so I'm sure you did your best in a tough situation. But since I'm here, I always like to share with the board and just our accomplishments with environmental efforts, with the Sustainable Jersey for Schools, the High School Environmental Club, having really supported our magnificent owls out front, and our GoFundMe account up to six, oh, what's the number?
6,329.
Yeah, well, towards the way, towards our $8,000 goal, and I think really distinctive piece of public art here at our, at our high school. And I, and still, lots and lots and lots of beautiful oak, I'm making this ring, wood sitting with nature's fell. So I continue to try to hope to connect that, we can connect them with, you know, developers, builders, and people who actually use dimensional lumber, as well as our fine special fundraising projects. It's a really nice example of sustainable use of urban salvage wood, which is a big resource, and sadly, a very growing resource. As the Emerald Ash Bore sweeps down on Highland Park, we're going to be losing a lot more trees. So also accomplishments, our beautiful new bike racks out front on two nine-loop and 13-loop bike racks that were funded by a grant that the Environmental Club wrote, got money from another Sustainable Jersey for Schools grant competition, and this is, have you heard anything about the bicycle pedestrian challenge? Yeah?
Yeah, you signed up for it. Okay, so I'm not involved with Environmental Club, from what I've heard, you sign up for it and you entered a contest to win a $25 gift certificate, I think?
Kinda, I, well, there's, so there, there's a small amount of prize money. I thought that was going to be for the posters that were advertising it. But then there's a pledge that any member of, any student body, I advocated for including the staff, I don't know what ended up happening with that, or local staff that is, to walk or bike, or, in other words, not get in a fossil fuel powered vehicle to get to school for two weeks. The idea of any habit that you, you know, if you can do something for seven times or whatever, you start to create a habit, and so that's the nature of the challenge, it's just an honor pledge. So I don't know what they decided to do. I thought that awarding prize money for an honor pledge was a little bit maybe creating.
I think it's for the posters.
Yeah, I think, I think so too. But anyway, we are going to demonstrate back to our funders what the potential impact of this event is. I mean, it would be really cool to do a more comprehensive survey about a before and after of who, of how lasting this is, but this will be self-reported by the students, how many people's habits change over those two weeks, and then what their intentions are going forward. So with our wonderful new high school schedule in the fall, I think that, I'm hoping we'll see a big uptick in biking and walking to school. And so big gear up for next year, which we hope to be a recertification year, and always looking for, I went to both the Green Fair, and I couldn't go to too much of the street fair, but trying to drum up parent and also, of course, staff and teacher and student enthusiasm for Sustainable Jersey for Schools, because it's a pretty heavy lift to do the certification requirements. And on that, one of the best ways that each of our four schools can earn points and make a difference toward certification is on district policies and district level actions. Each school receives points for them, and I won't go into that too much, but we've continued to follow up on some policies that the program promotes. One that we've had big success on is Breakfast After the Bell at Bartle, and there is a wonderful documentary effort underway. I think Dr. Taylor participated in an interview to try to demonstrate to staff, particularly at Irving School, that this is not such a big disruption and change as, as some staff might fear, that it's very, very doable, and especially in light of the really appalling statistics about the homelessness in our youngest. I think that it would, stands to reason that hunger and other forms of deprivation are something that our kids face. So I, I have to believe that we can, we can pull this off at Irving School and get more hungry kids fed by whichever way, which will also support, of course, learning. So hopefully that can roll out, I don't know, next fall, as soon as possible. I also have heard from the middle school that they are excited about the potential and have some sort of logistic arrangement where it won't also, again, be a big disruption. And then with the high school schedule, with school day starting in the cafeteria, where the, you know, where the, the Breakfast Before the Bell program is, is based, it should be a no-brainer to get that instituted. So if that can roll out in the early part of the year, and we can document that, then that's one set of district policies that we can be proud of and also earn Sustainable Jersey for School points. So just wanted to put in a plug for that, and thank you all for your ongoing support.
Thanks so much, Melanie.
Sorry, could you repeat the GoFundMe, like, URL or some searchable thing, just so that we kind of put that out there? Because neighbors of mine didn't know that they could get like an oak cutting board from the tree outside. They, so they were interested, and I just thought we should advertise a bit.
It's gofundme.com/hphstrees. That's Highland Park High School Trees.
And if you were to go to the GoFundMe site and just type in a search command.
Okay.
Highland Park.
Highland Park Trees.
Trees, or something like that, it would come up, so.
Okay.
Yeah, wonderful.
Thank you.
Thanks so much, Melanie.
Okay, thank you, guys.
Thank you.
You're good, okay. So that brings us to my President's Report. I don't have anything terribly specific, nothing made onto the agenda, but I did get an email yesterday reminding me that, and Scott has actually also been reminding me that it is time to do our Superintendent Evaluation. So you all should have gotten an email from our Field Service Representative. You know, I haven't even met, I need to rectify that. Maybe one of these days we should have her out to a meeting. She's a new one, a new rep within the last six or seven months, I think, but I just haven't really had much, much interaction with her. But she did send me an email to remind me about that. We have to have that whole process completed by July 1st. So of course, our one, on top of everything, Board Member Mr. Krieger has already completed his evaluation.
Geez.
So you all should have gotten this email from Mary Ann. If you didn't see it and didn't flag it, just, you know, go into your search bar, type in Mary Ann, it'll pop up for you. And it'll have a link, it will have the direct link to the evaluation, you can do it online. How long would you say it took you to do it, Mark?
Oh, seven or eight hours.
That doesn't bode well for me, Mr. Krieger.
It took, it took half an hour, at the outside, half an hour.
Yeah, yeah, it's not, I mean, it's not a terribly arduous, you know, process, so. So if everybody, so let's see, we have, between now and July 1st, we have three more meetings. So if everyone could, so what happens is you guys each fill out, or we all fill out our, Scott already filled out his portion, then we all fill out our portion, and those all get collected by New Jersey School Boards Association. All of, your individual ones will get printed out, put together in a packet, and brought, and then brought to me. I then take all of those, and then it's my job to synthesize everybody's comments into one cohesive document that we, goodnight, Lillian, that we can all agree on, and then we then present to Scott. So in order for that timeline to work, it would be really, if this week, if.
We don't wait until June 1st.
Yeah, so if this week, everybody could get to their individual ones, then that gives Mary Ann time to collate them all, get them to me, and gives me time to synthesize all of that into something hopefully coherent and helpful that we can then all take a look at. Maybe even for our first, if we could, I'd love it to be for our first closed session in June. So I'd like to shoot for that. So I'll send you guys an email reminder as well, reforwarding you Mary Ann's, and then I'll, she'll check in with me as well as we go, saying, okay, I've got five out of nine, I've got seven out of nine, so. All right. Anybody have any questions about that, about the process, or? Nope, okay.
Very good.
So then we'll move on to Old Business, and as I kind of mentioned before, what we put on there is to kind of have a little bit more of a fleshed-out conversation to the idea that we've, we've broached the last couple of meetings of this idea of having a discussion group. Whoa, I just went by the, my microphone, it got really loud there for a second. I brought the book that I would like for us to start off with. I know, I think Sharice, you already have, right? Did you already get this? Or maybe you had back a while ago. Anyway.
I might, is that the only title she has?
No, she has another one.
No, I think I got a different one.
This is the newest one, though. I think the other one is like.
Couple years old.
Yeah, 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 and then this one was 2014. This was the one that she recommended of her two that she would.
She can't read them.
Start us off with. And so what we're going to do, you guys won't be responsible for getting these yourself. We'll, like, the board, you know, we don't spend much money on anything for ourselves, like, actually, nothing, other than.
Baba Ganoush.
Baba Ganoush, pretty much, while we're having our closed session. We have a big Baba Ganoush.
We do.
That's a big line item for the, for the board.
The bulk of our salary, if you will.
Baba Ganoush will work for Baba Ganoush.
Yeah, the best job ever.
But even, even Jonathan said, you know, like, this is, this is okay, you guys can have, you know, get the books purchased. And I would like it, again, not to just be us, but for it to be, you know, some administrators. So maybe Scott, I don't know, I don't know how you want to do that on your end, if you want to just kind of put it out to administrators and let them volunteer, or if you want to assign, if you are.
Well, we, so the admins are on a roll, looking at cultural responsiveness, and I feel like we need to take that into next year, because the teachers are going to be dialoguing about that too. But I think that this topic is perfect for the board, because it's about policy, right? Which is one of the chief responsibilities of the, of the board. It's about helping us affect a policy that could lead to things like US history. It's about helping us affect a policy that could lead to things like US History II honors option. But people are, I guess, informed about that. So I could see you focusing on this topic while we focus on cultural responsiveness. They kind of go hand in hand. I mean, you can't have, you can't have this without our teachers and leaders being culturally responsive, right?
Right, well, but I, I would hate to have this whole conversation in the absence of staff and teachers. You know, I would like to at least put it out to, even if you put it out to Mike as the head of the administrators' union and put it out to Keith as the head of the teachers' union and say, we're opening this up as a dialogue. I don't, I don't think it's gonna, it's gonna work terribly well if just the board has this conversation. I totally agree. In isolation without administrators or staff.
Maybe then what we could do is supplement our work with periodicals, articles. I, I don't know if I, I have to give a lot of thought to whether or not we can pay attention to reading a book at this magnitude at the same time we're doing the other work. But I agree, I mean, we shouldn't work in isolation. So maybe we could supplement our work, educational leadership work, articles, PDK articles that focus on this topic.
But part of, part of what at least I was visioning for this is everybody would come together to discuss, you know, as like a book club kind of thing, you know. And we would hear like what ideas are like pie in the sky. A lot happens when, you know, we have these great ideas, you know, that we want to implement and you say, well, that's not what it's like on the ground, that's not what it's like for teachers, you know, I can't ask a administrator to do X. It'd be great to have those people here, they could inform our sort of idealistic, non-expert opinions about this stuff and we could also, you know, communicate with them what we're hoping to achieve. And this isn't just us, like this is something that grew out of the strategic plan. So you know, it wasn't like we just got together and had like a little, you know, the board had a meeting where like, we're gonna do this, like this, this grew out of the.
We've had a lot of conversations about this, so, but I, I have to think now about the grand vision you have. I didn't know, I thought this was just going to be a board book group, but you're seeing it as engaging members of the staff, leadership team. Okay, let me, let me get back to you on that. I need to wrap my head around it.
This could be purely volunteering, also on the basis of, basis of the community. I mean, we could start a board meeting by saying this is a board meeting, but be in a, in a, in a room which is conducive to people just talking to each other. And at the end, we could have a motion to adjourn because we'll have more than five board, you know, five or more board members. But anyone could come and if someone's interested, they can, and if they're not, they don't have to.
Well, I mean, and I, I.
And we could just talk.
I mean, I would hope that we would be able to open it up to community members. We do have a lot of educators in our community.
Absolutely.
Who I think, you know, obviously if, if you're working in K-12, you have the experience that fleshes out this book for us. Like having never been in that K-12 setting, only higher education, like I don't have as, you know, a clear sense of sort of how things function. And although the, the book that I am reading, that Carol Bures also wrote, different book, but similar topically, is all written in very clear language and everything. I just feel like having some dialogue discussion with folks who have worked in the area would be helpful to understanding how policy can inform what's happening in the schools and how, what's happening in the schools needs to inform the policy.
Right.
You know, it's two parts. I feel hampered sometimes by the not being able to have discussions around some policy issues in terms of how that would play out. Like you write a policy, but how does that policy actually play out in the classroom? You know, when it gets applied in the day-to-day life.
Yeah, I mean, I would agree absolutely, considering especially the conversation that we all just had over the last few months about the, you know, history with the honors option. So that was a lengthy discussion and I think that there was a whole lot of miscommunication because, you know, there were educators involved and non-educators involved and, you know, people who were strictly parents and then there was the, the teacher's input that was maybe, you know, misconstrued and so, yeah, having, having educators in the, in the community as a part of the conversation, I think would only enrich the conversation because we are all coming at it from different perspectives and different backgrounds.
And I mean, maybe we could even just do it where like the first three, I mean, we don't have to have like, you know, we don't have to read six books, you know? I mean, like if we have six meetings, we could break, you know, Carol's book up into three sections for the first three meetings and then maybe supplement with any other, you know, articles or webinars or whatever as we go along. But, you know, this, this came out of the strategic plan, it was the board goal for this year, we haven't touched it other than, you know, the one class and just the one class took a three-month discussion, which is great, I mean, because I think it kind of got us on the way, but I think we have to start talking about this, even if there are other goals that are being worked on and it can't just be us, like we, can't just be us talking and talking to ourselves.
I mean, I would like to hear from the people who are actually in the classrooms, like, how do you feel this will work?
Yeah, so, I mean, could you, could you put that out to the, you know, put it out to Keith and to Mike and, you know, see?
Yeah, let me feel them out, see what they think, go from there. And I'll report back to you guys next week.
Okay.
Okay, great.
That sounds good.
I'll probably talk to Darcy first and then I'll.
So and then next week, let's start to think about, you know, like how we would schedule this out, if we would schedule out like six meetings over the next, you know, the next 12 months, like maybe once every two months.
That's a good idea.
Mm-hmm, I like it.
Okay. All right. All right, we're starting to formulate a plan.
We're planning a plan.
We're planning a plan. So and under new business, since we weren't doing all of our.
Darcy, I had some old business.
Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, I'm sorry. Anyone else have old business? Three things, oh my gosh.
I just wanted to remind, I had three short things. I just wanted to remind the negotiations committee that this Thursday, the 11th, will be meeting and I forgot what I wrote in my email, but I think it's 4:30 to meet a little early. Yes?
I think 5:00.
5:00 to meet a little early and go over whatever. And so just a reminder, and then any other board member who could attend the Board of Health meeting in my place on Thursday at 7 o'clock at Borough Hall downstairs, I know they're going to be talking, I got an agenda, they will be talking about some school issues, so it'd be wonderful if someone else could come.
And, and we could tell them about our Narcan, like.
Well, by the way, that's something they were very interested in and talking about themselves.
Yeah.
And, and on their agenda.
Well, it's important. I'm like, I'm so glad that that's like.
Believe it or not, on their agenda is the discussion of lice in the schools.
Telling you. Let them have that discussion, how about that?
Okay, so.
How about if they handle the whole thing?
No, no, there's, there's a parent coming.
If I, if I could go, I would.
No, I know, I know, I understand. But if someone else could, it would be great. And then the last thing I wanted to ask Scott is about the, the discussion we had after the school boards meeting in October about a parent volunteering in the Irving and Bartle School, followed up by your visit to the Matutian School to see how they've implemented that. Do you have any, any update on that at all?
I, well, we did visit Matutian, we sat with them, we learned about the program. Mr. Benjamin, Ms. Freeboard and I went and we haven't done anything since, so I'd be glad to check in and see what their thoughts are. I think if they were really excited about the project, I would have heard about it by now, but I think with everything on their plate, it's, may have gotten lost.
Well, I, I'm not jumping out of my skin at all about they have to do this, but, and I know how busy it is, but it certainly seemed to me to be worth looking at for the future. I, I know there would be parents in town who would very much like to help on, exactly the way Matutian did, which, which, by the way, in the meeting had a wonderful, a wonderful reception by the school board members and administrators and so on that were in the audience and heard about.
Oh, we were excited about it too. I think what I'll do is I'll put it on my summer follow-up with the principals list.
Thank you, thank you.
That would still give us some time to pilot it in the fall if we, if they were interested.
Or later, it just, just, we should keep thinking about it. I think it would be good, good, very good for the schools and a good way to bring parents in.
Agreed.
Thank you. That's, that's all.
Okay, I'm sorry, did, I'm sorry, Mark, I didn't mean to run over that. Did anybody else have anything for old business?
For old business or new?
Old.
Oh, on, on old, Scott, we were talking earlier about the survey in relation to homework. What is the link for that? I mean, how, how is that distributed? I know I found it before and did it, but now I'm looking for it and I think it'd be interesting to get more input on it.
Best thing to do, those at home who haven't filled out the survey yet, still have a day or two to do it, even though I tried closing it out last Friday, that was a soft deadline, take another day or two, go to the Facebook page, the district's Facebook page and you'll find the links as for parents and residents to click.
Are they not on the website anywhere?
It's, might not be on the website, I think I just went out with social media, which I'm going to stick with at this point because I'm, I'm wrapping it up, I'm wrapping it up. We did get a decent response rate, we have over, a little over 250 members of the community respond, oh, I'm sorry, 280, a little over 280 members of the community, about, close to 90 students, high school students, and then I think 79 teachers. So the next step after that will be to convene focus groups and I hope to do that in early June.
Okay. All right. So if no one has anything else for old business, we'll move on to new business. The only thing we have on the agenda are, as I mentioned last week, I've got the, the resolutions that are going to be presented at the New Jersey School Boards Association Delegate Assembly on May 20th that we'll need to have a chat about and decide how we want to proceed as a board. So they're both on the drive, so if you had a chance to look at them on the drive, they are there. If you haven't, no worries, if you could just take a look at them for the next meeting, that would be great. So we could have a, we'll have like a full discussion about them at the next meeting. One looks pretty straightforward, it's just about, it's about being, districts being able to share a superintendent or a school business administrator. So it sounds like what district was a Waterford Township, wanted to be able to, like they were kind of like unexpectedly without a superintendent and wanted to be able to hire a shared superintendent, say, hey, you know, this town over here has a superintendent, he or she has some extra time on her hands, you know, we'll share them and they're by, they're not allowed, you know, by, whether by legislation or regulation, they can't do that. So they want to have New Jersey School Boards Association help them.
It was the time, yeah, they wanted to do it short-term and the state says it has to be three to five years.
Well, if, if you read through the whole thing, towards the end, what they're really saying is it's not, the time constraint wasn't the problem, it was that they actually couldn't, like the resolution makes it, the way the district worded the resolution, it makes it sound like that that was the issue, but the New Jersey School Boards kind of came back at them and was like, no, that's not really the issue. What the really issue is, is you can't do it at all, like on a short-term basis. So it wasn't that they couldn't do it for five years or for three years, they couldn't do it at all on this like temporary basis, like they, it's, they wanted to be able to do it just until they found someone.
And it really was, they wanted to be able to do it less than three.
Yeah, 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 yes. So, you know, I don't have a problem with that. I mean, I can only imagine how hard that is for small districts to, you know, maneuver around those kinds of, we think of ourselves as a small district, but there are really small districts out there. You know, there are small K to five, K to eight districts that have, you know, only a couple hundred kids and it's, you know, it's tricky in those kinds of circumstances. So I don't have any problem with that resolution at all. The second one is a lot trickier in a number of ways. The second one is from Addison, our, our next door neighbors, and they ostensibly took the charter school resolution that we had adopted back like November-ish, I think, in response to the potential expansions of numerous charter schools in the Middlesex and Somerset County area. And they took that resolution and they turned it into a resolution for the delegate assembly that boiled all that information down to NJSPA believes that the New Jersey Charter, that New Jersey Charter Schools in high-quality suburban school districts erode the operations of public education by draining badly needed financial resources, which, blah.
Yeah, I know, I know. They like.
Yeah, I mean, you can take that last, you know, erode the operations of public education by badly, by draining badly needed financial resources and that applies to any district, whether they're urban, suburban, high-quality, whatever that mean, so.
Yeah, that is really subjective, loaded.
Yeah, so, New Jersey School Boards Association just kind of said, nope, I, you know, we don't, we don't recommend adopting this resolution, but if, I mean, and I do encourage everybody to read through like New Jersey School Boards commentary because it's kind of all fascinating and there's all this kind of double and triple speak, well, charter schools are public schools and the legislation says that, you know, school choice is good, so we have, so, I mean, there's so much stuff in here that I just, I can't, I can't get past.
You need.
So, I mean, I would absolutely agree that I would oppose this as it stands, but there may be some way to turn, you know, for me to get up there and say, well, no, let's just say charter schools anywhere do this and let's pass it that way.
Can it be amended?
Yes, you can amend things like on the floor. It's kind of fascinating to watch the whole thing. I can go up and I say, I can say, I want it amended to read this way and then they have to take a vote on that amendment and I would be more than happy to do that.
That sounds good.
Because they kind of bring that up in their conversation about it, but then they're, they're working on the whole premise that charter schools are public schools and I would get up there and argue that charter schools are not public schools. Just because a, an entity receives public funds does not make them a public entity.
It's kind of crazy that that's school board's.
No, I mean, that's the only way a charter school is public is that they receive public funds. They, their board members are, their boards are privately appointed, very often in court, when they're brought to court, they argue all kinds of, you know, case law that they are private organizations and they don't have to, yeah, they don't have to reveal. Exactly. So I would get up and make the case that, no, that that may have been how the legislature intended it, but that is not how charter schools actually operate in the state of New Jersey or in any state.
Yeah, the definition of a public school needs to be really more narrowly defined in that case.
Yeah, so, so take, give that a gander for next week and I'd love to have a conversation with you guys about how you'd be comfortable with me proceeding at the delegate assembly because this could be really interesting. So does anybody else have anything for new business? Nope.
I had two, two like community reminders.
Okay.
For events. So this Thursday, the 11th of May at 6:00 PM, the middle school is going to be presenting the Humans of HP Gallery, which is patterned after the Humans of New York. So that's happening in the middle school cafeteria, which is right here, at 6:00 PM this Thursday, the 11th.
So is it like student photography or?
I, we got the notice and the email and I had put it on my calendar and I forget the details of it, but I believe it is student.
Cool.
Sixth graders did it. It's, it's like Humans of New York, it's picked photographs and then little interview, mini-interviews, yeah.
Right, so this was like the project that they had to interview neighbors or family members and ask them questions that they don't normally get to ask in a regular, how, how are you conversation.
Oh, cool.
And it was just getting to know different people and there was photography involved. So maybe the person that you're looking at is not the person that you think they are. After you've read the description, maybe you learned something that you wouldn't have assumed from looking at the picture. So I'm super excited about the project, I think it's going to be really great. And hearing from some of the sixth grade friends of my daughter in sixth grade, it sounds like they're going to be really adorable and interesting. So I'm excited to share that. And also, I was looking at something online and I found myself in this area and I was wanting to share this with the community since it's so close. So the, at Rutgers Livingston Campus at the Student Center in Piscataway, the New Jersey Trans Youth Forum will be held in 11 days and tickets are available for students, there is a scholarship request ticket that you could, you know, put forward. There are group tickets available, adults and educators are welcome, families, but it's, it's a pretty big deal. It's the entire state of New Jersey Trans Youth Forum. So it's going to be a full-day workshop and they're offering sponsor tables, you know, for, for different resources and groups and, you know, being a part of the policy committee, the committee that wrote the policy on gender non-conformity, I thought that it was kind of my responsibility to share this information with everyone, so.
When did you say it was?
This is going to be.
In 11 days.
In 11 days, it doesn't have.
19?
19.
The 19th, thank you very much, May 19th. And again, it's Rutgers Livingston Campus, Piscataway, at the Student Center.
Is Rutgers the actual host of the event or is it?
No, I think they're just the venue. So this is an outside group, but like I said, this is, I found out through HITOPS, which is the group that runs out of Princeton and they're a part of the, God, what is it now? I'm blanking. Anyway, it's, it's, you know, for families and allies and other LGBT youth. And the specific group, HITOPS, is a part of that, but HITOPS is specific to the trans community. So. So, yeah, so it's, it's, it's right next door, it couldn't be more convenient.
Could I ask a quick question? You know, I was just looking this up so I could like put down more specific address in my little calendar. And I have one here that says May 20th, Trans Youth Forum. Is it possible that it's May 20th or is this wrong?
Okay.
This is Jersey Shore PFLAG, so it's not the site itself.
So PFLAG is the group in Princeton, but Jersey Shore, I mean, they have different, you know, chapters around, but I found out about this, the Princeton PFLAG group.
Oh wait, here's the website of the NJ Trans Youth Forum. Maybe that'll tell us for sure.
Let's see.
All right, well, it says 11 days, we can update next week.
I'm sorry, it says, May 20th.
The 20th, okay, May 20th.
11 days, two hours.
Two hours.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes.
Okay. So it's May 20th and they begin at 7:30 for registration and sign-in, there's breakfast, socializing, and then opening remarks, and then they break out into youth students and then educators and parents and allies. And there's basically an entire day of workshops and socializing and, you know, feeling, feeling, I would think that you're a part of a greater community, you know? And I know that we're really lucky in Highland Park with the attitude that we've had about the trans community here, considering our policy, but I know that lots of kids in different districts, you know, they might not have as much of a welcome when they're coming out. So any way that we can disseminate this information, I thought would be useful.
That's great.